Yes.
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 First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2012 regular meeting.
Move for passage of the minutes from July 9, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
App state is I was not here for that meeting. I apologize for that.
Okay, this evening we have a public hearing to rezone property located at 1320 Paris Road from C2 General Commercial to I1 Light Commercial. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Bruce? All right, Your Honor. Thank you. Mommons Heating and Cooling is asked to rezone property located at 1320 Paris Road. This has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 3. And I will turn to Rita Jackson to cover the details of the rezoning.
This city council agenda item concerns a request from Dennis Mommons, Mommons Heating and Cooling to rezone his property, which is located at 1320 Paris Road, as you can see on the smart screen here. The property is currently zoned C2 General Commercial, and he's requesting it to be rezoned to I1 Light Industrial. This property actually has split zoning. The front portion is that is zoned C2 is the only thing that we are concerned with with this particular request. Mr. Mommons has indicated that he would like to expand his business by adding or changing machinery and equipment to keep in tune with changing technology in the HVAC business. This proposed expansion would exceed the limitations of the current zoning ordinance, which was adopted back in September 2011. What he is requesting receive actually exceeds the limits of equipment, which has a weight class of 7.5 tons or equivalent to 15,000 pounds. And it carries also that material can only be stacked six feet in the yard. If it was rezoned to I1 Light Industrial, those requirements would go away, and the only requirement that would he would have would be that it would require screening between the his property and the residential property that is located behind. Can you change it to the map that has the zoning that shows? Show you what I'm talking about. The zoning map. So we're going to just turn up here and look at it and look that down. I apologize for that. If you can look at his property, which is highlighted there in the yellow, the front portion, which faces Paris Road, is actually the C2 zoning, and the back portion is actually zone R1, which is residential. At the time Mr. Mommons purchased that property, it was actually purchased as two separate tracts, but the zoning map, I guess the beacon map, has actually combined that into one property. But we're only talking about rezoning the front portion, which his property actually is located on now. And if it was rezoned, we would have to require the zoning between the industrial and the residential portion of that. You have a map actually in your packet that is not sideways. Notices were sent to 21 surrounding property owners within 185 feet of their request. City staff received two inquiries regarding the request, but that was with no opposition. They just needed additional information and what would be required if it was actually rezoned. At the July 3 meeting, Planning and Zoning Meeting, the commission made a recommendation to city council to grant approval of the requested rezoning. Staff recommends that council proceed with the advertised public hearing. We do have Mr. Mommons present in the audience if you have any additional questions.
So where would the fencing have to go up?
It would actually be between his property and the property that abuts up against it, which would be your residential.
This one, two, three, four, Sunnydale.
Which is actually residential behind, which actually faces the Western Street. He's actually located on Paris Road, and Western Street property was behind, which he actually owns also.
Dennis' building would shield that.
And there are actually different types of screening. It could actually be a fence. You can actually have trees, shrubbery, or different things that you can actually screen the two properties.
So we're not rezoning the area that abuts up to Western Street?
No.
Correct?
We're only doing the Paris Road.
That will still stay R1?
Yes.
But do I have to screen it if I own it that's residential?
If it's actually residential housing there, it would have to be. But you wouldn't actually have to have a fence. There are other different types of fencing that you have. You can have trees, shrubbery, and different things that you could actually.
Yeah, there's a house directly behind that, Dennis, isn't there?
Well, that's from where the zoning is. From here to here is green grass. There's a house here, and then I own this house here. So what you're saying is I need a fence or a screen there?
Because it's R1.
I think that's what it requires, yeah.
Someday I plan to subdivide, sell the house. I bought it more for the green space that wasn't being taken care of.
I don't think the code makes a differentiation as to who owns that property or how much. I think it has to be screened because of residential.
Yes.
Lou, is that right?
Are we talking?
Oh, great big one.
Yeah.
Eighteen feet?
No. No.
Now, if he, if he bought the other house, could they go ahead and do the L1 all the way up to Western?
Could it actually be zoned I1 all the way up to Western? You would probably, if you really have problems with that, because you're actually getting into the residential zoning, and then that would be more spot zoning, so you would.
Actually, what I have planned down the road is the green space. Here again, I plan on eventually selling the house and making the back part of that lot equal with the one little L-shaped lot. And then just have a fence go across, and then we may approach it another day to push the L1 back for that other 120 feet or whatever it is there.
And the code does spell out a timeframe that he has to do the screening. I apologize for not having it, able to quote it right off the top of my head, but there will be some leeway in it.
And there have been no objections?
No.
Are there?
I'm gonna say he's a good business for Mexico. Every time I go by the place, I'll wait just clean as a pen, so.
Are there any other comments? Audience? Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Under new business ordinance this evening, we have bill number 2012-46, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a hangar lease with Bill Carter. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We do maintain a list of those wishing to rent hangars, and Mr. Carter's the next one on the list, and we did have a hangar become available. And I will turn it over to Russell Rogge to cover the details of the lease.
This is pretty cut and dry. As, as Bruce stated, this is with Mr. Carter. Bill Carter has a working and operable plane. He'll be renting hangar number 11, and that will be a $90 rent, and that is Father Schmidt's old hangar. I recommend reproof. Thank you.
Move for reading of bill number 2012-46.
Second.
Flash?
Yes.
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 Yes. Bill number 2012-46, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a hangar lease with Bill Carter. Whereas the Mexico Memorial Airport currently has one hangar available for rent, and whereas a list of persons interested in renting airport hangars and maintaining the city manager's office, and Bill Carter's placement on the hangar list allows him the opportunity to accept the hangar. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, that the city manager be authorized to enter into a hangar lease on behalf of the city of Mexico with Bill Carter. A copy of the hangar lease is attached and marked as a little bit A. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of bill number 2012-46.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Next, we have bill number 2012-47, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Piper Jaffray for public sector financial advisory services. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. A couple of things are a little at play as we move forward with this. One is that the contract is time for renewal, and so that's what brought it up. But I also want to point out, and I think Rogge will cover a little more thoroughly as well, is that with the passage of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Bill, Rule G23 was set by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. And generally what that said is that if you offer financial advice, such as to cities and so on, for bonding issues, you also then cannot turn around and purchase it. You can't be an underwriter. So you have to pick and choose what you do upfront. You, so if you're going to provide us advice, you turn around and can't buy. Or if you're buying, you can't provide advice. You've got to pick and choose which side of the equation you wish to be on. And so as a part of this, Piper Jaffray is making the selection as well at this time to be only on the financial advising side and not on the underwriting purchasing side. And so I wanted to point that out very clearly as we move forward. So I will now turn it over to Roger to go over the proposals and what we've received. So.
As Bruce mentioned, there are some regulations that we must adhere to with the changes in the announcement of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act and Rule G23. In 2008, we went through a selection process to get an underwriter to assist us with bond financing for the wastewater revenue bonds, in which they assisted us with three projects there. And then they also assisted us in underwriting and making some financial advice to us in regard to the Neighborhood Improvement District, which included the Mid-America Brick and Structural Clay Products. With the new protection acts going in place, we are to make sure that there is a separation between a financial advisor and an underwriter when it includes bond debt placement. And we must have that in place on any transactions that would take place after November 27, 2011. We did advertise for the request for qualifications in the Mexico ledger and sent directly to eight firms. Two responses were received, with each proposal meeting criteria set forth in the scope of services. The two responding firms, Piper Jaffray and Springstead, demonstrated in their proposals exceptional experience in providing financial advisory service, services matching the city's anticipated needs for the near term. Representatives for the two firms were interviewed by myself, Bruce Legel, our city manager, and Vicky Dinkie, our financial advisor. And we discussed not only the services they could provide, but also the fees to which they would charge based on the various funding scenarios. We found that each firm was very well qualified, had a good history of providing financial, sound financial advice, not only to Missouri users, but across the country. Each firm's fee structure is driven by the size, type, and credit rating supporting the financing objective. And Piper Jaffray provided lower pricing with the schedules delivered to us on both the basis of financing type and size of issue. The firms were also reviewed for underwriting activity during the past year. The city found both firms to be active in Missouri municipal financing, specifically noting both general obligation and various forms of annual appropriation funding. In review of each firm's response, the city staff recommends that Piper Jaffray be selected for professional financial advisory services for a period of three years on an as-needed basis. And at the conclusion of the three-year term, the city of Mexico and Piper Jaffray may mutually agree to an extension of the terms for an additional two years on a one-year term basis. Again, we had an opportunity to interview both firms. They were both highly qualified, and when it came down to having two with equal qualifications, then we looked at the cost to the city. And we also looked at the services that Piper Jaffray did provide us, since we hired them in 2008 and found it to be a very good service. Staff recommends that council proceed with reading and passage of the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement with Piper Jaffray for financial advisory services. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You said that was on an as-needed basis, and so unless there's some type of a contemplation of a bond issuance, we don't pay them anything, is that correct?
That is correct. As a matter of fact, when we have used Piper Jaffray in the past, there's been times when I've just called them on a what-if situation, and they would deliver to me the cost of financing a particular project and what their rates were, and then would give me a debt schedule. And there was no charge for those services. But then when we came to do something real, then of course they would be paid for their services.
I think you picked a very good firm that has given us some very, very good advice in the past.
Okay, thank you.
That our northern neighbors, wish they had them.
Amen.
What, what were the difference in the rates? You say it basically got down to the difference in the rates.
Yeah, I'd be glad to give you a couple of examples. Like on a $3 million revenue bond, which would be like we did for the wastewater project, the fees for Piper Jaffray would run 7,500. The fee for Springstead would run $15,312. And we had that similar type of a separation in fees, whether it be 3 million to 5 million, or whether it be a revenue bond or a general obligation bond. Your general obligation bond tended to be, there tended to be a little less separation because it was, when you do that, you are obligating, of course, your tax revenue for that particular payment.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Make a motion for bill number 2012-47.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Bill number 2012-47, a resolution stepping into proposal from Piper Jaffray for public sector financing advisory services to the city of Mexico and authorizing the city manager to sign contract documents pertaining thereto. Whereas a statement of qualification from public sector financing advisory firms were advertised for the purpose of choosing a qualified financial advisor to assist in future debt financing analysts and related structural structuring services. And whereas the firm of Piper Jaffray of Leewood, Kansas City was selected in 2008 to assist the city with three wastewater revenue bonds issued and a Neighborhood Improvement District bond, which were Mid-America Brick and Structural Clay Products. Whereas the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act, along with Rule, Rule G23, set by the Municipal Service Securities Rulemaking Board, it was found necessary to send out an RFQs for financial advisors to make us certain that the city separates the functions of financial advisor from underwriting upon any debt issuance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the city of Mexico, Missouri, accepts a proposal received from Piper Jaffray of Leewood, Kansas, to provide financial advisor services for a period of three years on an as-needed basis. Section 2, the city managers hereby authorized to sign contract documents with Piper Jaffray for financial advisor services. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of passage. I move for passage of bill number 2012-47.
Second.
Flash?
Yes.
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 Next, we have bill number 2012-48, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the final change order number three with Karen Brock Construction Incorporated for the Audrain Road 820 Hunting Field Road Project. This is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. As said, this is a change order three, the final change order. This will get us to close out on this project. And to cover the details, I will turn to Kenzie Russell.
This has been a little bit of a long time coming, but we're slowly working our way through all the paperwork to close out the first contract on paving AR 820 or Commerce Road. This is the final change order, sets the final cost for the project, and if approved, we will proceed with sending in paperwork to MODOT to close this part of the grant funding. We do have pending a Phase 2, or approximately an additional 500 feet of paving, that we have sufficient grant money to do. However, MODOT cannot obligate that money until we get this first part closed out. And so that's kind of the story on the project. This change order is for $13,636. It's the only change order that we have that has adjusted the cost of the contract. It's a 560 some odd thousand, or a little more than that, contract. Original contract was 593,000. So this represents about a 4% or so, 3% or so contract, which is certainly within reason on this size of contract. And so we're recommending that we proceed with this. It adjusts final quantities. It also adjusts the time of the contract by a few days. We are not recommending any liquidated damages. I think the actual completion was about eight days beyond the contract time. Most of that was due to some miscommunication between our consulting engineer and the contractor about repairs on a shoulder that needed to be made. They actually had to take out a piece of the paved shoulder, repair the base, and replace that piece. And that work has all been done and completed. And so we're not recommending any liquidated damages with it, just this change order to finish the project.
Be good to get this and closed out and do the additional 500 feet because of all the dust out there. Tremendous dust.
Yes. I think the farther east we can push the paving, the better off we'll be.
Maybe it'll rain one of these days.
About the time we want to do some paving, it'll probably start raining.
Suggest we plan on it tomorrow, then.
Your Honor, I move for reading of bill number 2012-48.
Second.
Yes.
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 Bill number 2012-48, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the final change order number three with Karen Brock Construction Incorporated for the Audrain Road 820 Hunting Field Road Project. Whereas the final change order number three with Karen Brock Construction Incorporated adjusts the quantities as to constructed amounts, and whereas final change order number three will add $13,636.25 to the contract amount, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign change order number three to the Audrain 820 Hunting Field Road Project. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Move for passage of bill number 2012-48.
Second. Yes.
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 Under new business ordinance this evening, we have bill number 2012-43, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease of a parcel of land in the Mexico Memorial Airport with Robert Boiles. I'll put from an outset right. And James Curtis for the construction of a privately owned hangar. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a land lease at the airport to build this private hangar, and I will turn to Russell to talk about the details, and then I may have some additional comments after that as well.
Yes, this is the first time that we've done a actual land lease. We've done leases of buildings and put buildings up and done a payback for those. So this is the first foray into a land lease where they actually own the building, and we leased them the property underneath it. This lease is the final form, which went through several different iterations, and has been agreed to by Mr. Boys and Mr. Curtis to continue forward. They would construct the hangar at no cost to the city on this land. The lease would be initially for 20 years with a proposed, would be reevaluated then five years afterwards, after that section. The FAA likes to go through five-year increments, or prefers that you do that. The lease would restrict the use of the building to aircraft storage and general aviation-related purposes, no chemical storage and things of that nature. The LSE will pay the city a sum of $100 a month during the term of the lease, and a mandatory lease rent cost review every fifth year for the duration of the lease. LSE will be responsible for constructing any ramp necessary to provide access for the hangars to the taxiway apron and runway. We determined that this, the FAA and MODOT look at our plans. We have an airport layout plan, and that plan has a certain number of buildings that are put together. It's called a cluster. And you can only have so many buildings within one cluster. We will be creating a second one, which means that the building has to be 120 feet from the next closest building. We recommend that council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance. Ordinance has been posted the required length of time. You may have any questions?
Why did we change the way we were doing it? What was the?
They preferred to own the building outright, and Bruce had some experience with it in the past and didn't see any issues with it. Bruce and Lou and I sat down and went through it several times, and they took it to their attorney, made some changes, and we agreed a couple of them, and they've agreed that this is the final form. It just seems to be smoother if it's done this way. You've got a willing participant that's wanting to finance the building themselves, opposed to us financing it for them and then paying it off over a 20-year period of time. And it works out pretty slick.
Does this go on the property tax rolls?
It's on city property, so I don't know if it would or not. Good question.
No, I don't believe it would. Chris, I'll go back to your point to begin with. You can, this is the way I generally looked at this. I mean, we were, we were giving basically a land lease in order to build a building out there, and we were collecting a dollar a year, and then at the end of the time, we would own the building in 20 years. In most cases, what you're going to find that, yeah, they're going to build a building, but they're not necessarily going to maintain it. They're just going to try and give it to you at the end of the 20 years. In this case, they're going to build a building, they're going to own it for 20 years, be able to continue to own it, and they're going to pay us $100 a month. So instead of getting a building that they gave us $20 over the 20-year period for that was wore out, we're going to get $24,000 over the 20-year period, and they're going to continue to own it, continue to maintain it, continue to pay a lease at a rate that we'd be lucky to lease it for when we did take ownership. And we don't have to maintain it, we don't have to refurbish it, and we're not going to, you know, have any costs in building it and running. So this is, I think, is a much better proposal for us, and it keeps them in a position that they own it and maintain it, and I think it's a good deal for both parties.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Make a motion for read by number 2012-3.
Second.
Your turn.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Nichols. Yes.
Bill number 2012 dash... Oh. Bill number 2012 dash forty-eight, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the final change... Ooh. I lost the page here somewhere. There it is. 2012 dash forty-three. Sorry about that. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease of a parcel of land at the Mexico Memorial Airport with Robert Boiles and James Curtis for the construction of a privately owned hanger. I move for a second reading of bill number 2012 dash forty-three by title only.
Flash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
Bill number 2012 dash forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease of a parcel of land at the Mexico Memorial Airport with Robert Boiles and James Curtis for the construction of a privately owned hanger. I move for passage of bill number 2012 dash forty-three.
Second.
Flash.
Yes.
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 Next ordinance, ordinance we have, new business is bill number 2012 dash forty-nine, an ordinance rezoning property located at 1320 Paris Road and mending the district map referred to in section fifteen dash one forty-two of the code of the city of Mexico, Missouri, zoning to I-1 Light Industrial. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, your honor. We held the public hearing earlier this evening on this, and unless you have any additional questions, we would recommend you proceed with the two readings by title and passage.
I move for first reading of bill number 2012 dash forty-nine by title only.
Second.
Flash.
Yes.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Nichols. Yes.
Bill number 2012 forty-nine, an ordinance rezoning a property located at 1320 Paris Road and amending the district map referred to in section fifteen dash one forty-two of the code of the city of Mexico, Missouri, zoning to I-1 Light Industrial. I move for a second reading of bill number 2012 forty-nine.
Flash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes. Bill number 2012 forty-nine, an ordinance rezoning a property located at 1320 Paris Road and amending the district map referred to in section fifteen dash one forty-two of the code of the city of Mexico, Missouri, zoning to I-1 Light Industrial. I move for passage of bill number 2012 forty-nine.
Second.
Flash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes. We have an old business ordinance, and this is up for a second reading by title only and passage. It's bill number 2012 dash forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager upon recommendations of the chief of public safety to ban the burning of garbage, trash, leaves, yard rankings, cuttings from trees, trees and bushes during periods of dry weather, which result in an increased fire hazard and a danger to the public safety. Bruce?
Yes, your honor. Again, as mentioned, we had the first reading of this ordinance at the last meeting. We have received no additional comments since then, and therefore unless you have additional questions, council, we'd recommend you proceed with the second reading and passage.
It's amazing that all these years, this has never come up before. I just can't imagine that.
That's what I was thinking when that first... It's like, we don't have it.
Make a motion for your bill number 2012 forty-five, two reasons by title only. Second reading.
Second reading.
Second.
I apologize, I'm out.
Flash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes. Bill number 2012 dash forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager upon the recommendations of the chief of public safety to ban the burning of garbage, trash, leaves, yard rankings, cuttings from trees, trees and bushes during periods of dry weather, which result in an increased fire hazard and a danger to the public safety. I move for passage of bill number 2012 dash forty-five.
I'd like to second that, please.
Flash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Nichols.
Yes.
Other business this evening, we have appointments to the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board. Bruce?
Yes, your honor. This is a council appointment to the Enhanced Enterprise Zone. We did have advertisement and asked interested citizens to submit an application. We have one position open on the board, which is for a term that expires August 2017. We did receive one application from Michael Myers, expressing interest to serve on the board.
Think he'd be a great addition. So I move that we add Michael Myers to the Enhanced Enterprise Board.
Second.
Flash.
Yes.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Nichols. Yes.
Next, we have the claims.
Move we pay the bills.
Second.
Flash.
Yes.
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 Nichols. Yes.
We'll start with Councilman Williams this evening for council comments.
I would like to commend the Public Safety Department on the quick response and arrest for the deaths and stuff we had. That was very nice. And I'd like to ask Mother Nature to please let it rain.
I'd like to thank the citizens of Mexico for anticipating this ordinance and not burning that much. I have nothing to say.
Counsel, I would ask that you take a look at your calendars for Wednesday, August 15th, for a special session, for a budget work session. And let us know if that's going to work for you.
What time?
I would anticipate that we start a little earlier than we have been. I want to say last time we started, didn't we start at four? And because it would be, we would probably go at least a couple hours, and then we'll try to PM. If you want to go AM, that's fine, too. And then we'll do kind of a, we'll have a little working lunch brought in, and we'll probably then continue probably till eight, nine o'clock then. It'll be a four or five hour session.
Okay, I think we're ready for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Would you come to the podium? And we generally keep those to three minutes roughly, so go ahead. Give your name and address, please.
Kenny Smith, 2308 Southern Hills. I'd like to bring to the attention of the council the condition of the shoreline at Lakeview Lake, or Missouri County Light Lake, whatever it's called. I ride my bike around it a lot, I walk around it, and I'm continuously amazed at how poor the condition is. I've stood up and I've estimated that roughly probably three quarters of the shoreline is inaccessible. There's one bench that the city installed several years ago for people to sit on and enjoy the lake. It's completely blocked by foliage today. The west side of the lake that borders Fairground Street, I'm six foot tall, and I know if I go to, if I was able to make my way over the bank to where those weeds are, 12, 15 foot tall. It's very, very unsightly and completely inaccessible to the water itself. And I would ask that if you do do something, don't just go in with a couple of weed eaters and whack everything down. Don't just put a Band-Aid on it. Go in there and put some rock, put little rocks over that bank there on that west end. Make it very beautiful. We've got a great resource out there. It could really be beautified and look very pretty. So just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kenny. Next.
Greetings to the citizens of Mexico, Missouri. I am the founder and organizer of Honor Ride Across America. My mission is to try to create a day called Brother to Brother Day to honor our military, our police officers, our firefighters, and EMTs. My mission is about to enter Mexico, Missouri, here on Thursday. I have approached your city council for a proclamation declaring Brother to Brother Day, September 10th, 2012, within the boundaries of this community. I am asking for a, well, I want to applaud you first of all, and then at the recession of this meeting, I'm asking if you would please allow me to have a photograph of your council with myself. And I just want to applaud you and thank you so much for honoring my mission. I'll be here on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have that proclamation correct. Any other public comments? If not, I move we adjourn. Second.
Flash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.